Pledge.
One to the nation, student of the United States of America, and to the developer which stands for nation under God in this soul.
Broca.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Attention.
Say here.
We're here.
Here. Can you hear?
Charles Wilson.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
We got item two approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I do.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes. Um, and I could, maybe I'll do this stuff off. I like to talk about the ARPA. I like to be on the agenda of the ARPA money, but we maybe I'll talk about that. You know, how much money we got? How much money we spent? How much money's left and what's earmarked?
Would you like to discuss that today or would you like that on the committee of the whole next week?
We can do a committee as a whole. I could just talk to Tim.
Okay.
What do you prefer?
Between now and next week, why don't you touch base with Kim and then, or with Tim, excuse me, and then we'll put it on the committee of the whole. So we can just have a roundtable discussion.
And one other thing I have is, is the time clock.
Okay.
Now, we can discuss that in committee as a whole. Has anything been passed on that yet? As I know, no.
Um, that should be on the committee of the whole for next week.
Okay, so ARPA and time clock will be on the committee as a whole.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
Okay.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three A, review of the minutes, December twenty second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Simmons with support from Commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion on approval of the December twenty second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, January fifth, twenty twenty-three organizational meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve. I've read these things.
A motion from Commissioner Simmons.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Scott to approve the January fifth, twenty twenty-three organizational meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three C, January fifth, twenty twenty-three committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Simmons with support from Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four, public comment and agenda items only. This is on agenda items only. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Come on up, sir. State your name for the record.
Mark Sorbroke, Westbury Township. First of all, I'd like to congratulate new board on your election and on your reelection. Um, as you know, I'm a former commissioner and I currently serve on the Savile Valley Committee of Mental Health. Gordon and I would certainly appreciate if the board would see fit to allow me to continue in that position. That position's very near and dear to my heart. I have a stepson that receives services from the Savile Valley. He's twenty years old and he's in a home that is for developing disabled persons that is staffed by the Savile Valley. And again, it's just a very personal thing with me. The board would allow me to continue to serve on that board. I would certainly appreciate it. Also, if there's any other boards that commissioners are unable or unwilling to serve on, I would certainly entertain the idea of sitting on those. I briefly looked at what your requests were as far as the committee assignments. I see you had one that was for district health. That board, I've sat on that board for the last two years and I will continue to serve on that board of the Board of Commissioners of the city. Another thing is, standing committees, I think might be in your best interest to perhaps have an understanding committee for transit. Um, I know there hasn't been one. I know there was, there was some discussion about that previously. Um, I know that unfortunately, there was an oversight on the millage renewal this last time and perhaps if there was a some commissioner oversight, that might not happen again. I'm sure it won't happen again in the future, but I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have a standing committee to meet with transit as needed. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorbroke. Any other public comment on agenda items only in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item five, correspondence. We received correspondence from Alcona County related to support for economic impact study and foster township related to ARPA funding for the library. Those have been received and filed. Item six, action on consent calendar. Commissioners, I would, I would like to pull item B.
Which one, please?
Item B.
Use in Bravo.
Correct. Any other ones?
Those, those. I guess I'd just have to ask, does all the commissioners understand what a consent calendar is? Or should we do each one right now individually?
We talked, Tim talked about it a little bit at the last meeting.
And then we covered it in the orientation back in October as well. So if there are any questions, but I'm certainly happy to field them.
Commissioners, would you like to pull them individually or are you guys okay consenting some of these resolutions?
I'm fine.
You understand where I'm at. Item six, we're talking about consenting to all of these actions, but pulling item B.
Right.
Do you have any questions on any of those?
No.
You didn't want to handle.
You want them individually? Are you okay putting them together?
I can blame where you put them together.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Okay, so let me read these so everybody knows.
Well, H, do you want that separate since Mr. Sorbroke is here?
I'm, I'm going to read those. Tim and I kind of touched base on that briefly. I think each one of those do need to be read separately, but I don't know if we need to, to separate them as far as passing them. So item, would, would one of you commissioners like to read? I would like to read Commissioner Newbeckers. Would one of you commissioners like to read Mr. Vons or, or Mr. Sorbroke's?
You want?
Like to read Mr. Sorbroke's? Commissioner Scott?
Sure.
Pardon me? You know Mr. Vons, correct? Okay.
This will be his only one being called.
Correct. So item six A, we have correspondence for, or excuse me. Jeez. Resolution to intent, intent to apply for state formula operating assistance for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. This resolution is sponsored by the Oma County Transit Director Ray Blamer. Pursuit to Act fifty-one of the Public Act of nineteen fifty-one. It is necessary for the Board of Commissioners to formally apply for a nine hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, geez, nine hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two in state and federal financial assistance under provisions of the act and to name an official representative of the county. Approval of the resolution will satisfy requirements of the act and named Transit Director Ray Blamer as the Oma County Representative. Item six C, resolution to approve authorized agent for the sale of dog licenses. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. It is unlawful for any person in Michigan to own a dog six months old or over unless the dog is licensed. The county treasurer is required to keep a record of all dog licenses issued under, issued during the year and may deputize authorized agents to sell dog licenses. Approval of the resolution will formalize an agreement with Ray Family Animal Shelter to act as an, as an authorized agent of the county treasurer at a fee of one dollar per license sold. Item sixty, resolution to accept the radio equipment grant. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. In twenty-two, Enbridge launched its Safe Community First Responder Program specifically for first responders providing safely along the company's right of way. After receipt of a grant application from the sheriff's office, Enbridge awarded a seventy-five hundred dollar grant for the purchase of Motorola radios compatible, compatible with radios currently in use. Approval of the resolution will document the board's acceptance of the grant. Item six E, resolution to authorize an agreement for preparation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two cost allocation plan. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator, Tim Delahoney. Oma County receives grant funding which allows for the indirect recovery of costs incurred by other county agencies that support their operations through a cost allocation plan. Preparation of a new cost allocation plan is complex and requires specialized knowledge. Maximus Consulting Services Incorporated, a state-recognized vendor, has provided accurately, excuse me, accurate and timely cost allocations planning services to Oma County for many years. Approval of this resolution will authorize an agreement with Maximus to perform this service for fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three at a total annual cost of seven thousand dollars. The proposed agreement includes options for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five with no cost increase. Item six F, Commissioner Wiltie?
Resolution, resolution in honor of Ronald Vaughn. This resolution is sponsored by county administrator Timothy Delahoney. On November eighth, two thousand and eighteen, Ronald Vaughn was elected to a two-year term on the Oma County Board of Commissioners. He was reelected to the board in two thousand and twenty and proudly represented the citizens of Commissioner District Three Unit till his term expired on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Approved of the resolution will create a permanent record of the board's sincere appreciation for Ron's outstanding service and extraordinary contributions to Oma County.
Item sixty, resolution in honor of Brad Newbecker. This resolution is sponsored by county administrator Timothy, Timothy Delahoney. On November eighth, two thousand and eighteen, Brad Newbecker was elected to a two-year term on the Oma County Board of Commissioners. He was reelected to the board in twenty twenty and proudly represented the citizens of Commissioner District Four, including two years as vice chairperson until his term expired on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Approval of this resolution will create a permanent record of the board's sincere appreciation for Brad's outstanding service and extraordinary contributions to Oma County. Item six H, Commissioner Scott?
Whereas on November fifth, two thousand and twenty, Mark Sorbroke was elected to a two-year term on the Oma County Board of Commissioners. And whereas Mark Sorbroke proudly represented the citizens of Commissioner District Number Two. And whereas Mark Sorbroke served many roles in his capacity as county commissioner. And whereas throughout his tenure on the Board of Commissioners, Mark Sorbroke demonstrated the spirit of public service through his participation on boards, serving the Oma County, Oma Commission on Aging, District Health Number Two, Department of Human Services, Emergency Medical Service, Assaboe Valley, Community Mental Health, and many others. And whereas Mark Sorbroke was a willing mentor for his fellow public officials, leading by example and offering useful information. Now therefore be it resolved, their appreciation, your Oma County Board of Commissioners hereby honors Mark Sorbroke for his outstanding service and extraordinary contributions to Oma County. They had further resolved that this resolution be included in the minutes of the Oma Board of Commissioners and as a permanent record of achievements and respect for Commissioner Mark Sorbroke.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we have item six A, six C, six D, six E, six F, six G, six H. Can I have a?
A move that we consent on those items.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
A second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Is there any discussion on those? We'll call both.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew. Yeah. Charles Wilson.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item six, a resolution of intent to place a ballot question about transit funding before the electorate. This resolution is sponsored by the Oma County Transit Director Ray Blamer. On August eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Oma County electors approved a ballot question to authorize three tenths of a mil to provide operating funds for countywide bus service. Approval of the ballot measure allowed collection of funds from two thousand and eighteen through twenty twenty-two inclusive. Approval of the resolution will alert the Oma County clerk of the board's intention to place a similar millage question before Oma County voters on May second, twenty twenty-three ballot. Actual ballot language, if any, will, will be the subject of future meetings. Ray, would you like to come up? Do you have anything to add to that?
I'm not sure if the millage you're talking about was was, was realized in, in two thousand and eighteen. I think the millage we're talking about was several years prior to that. If, if I understand what you said.
A collection of funds from two thousand and eighteen through twenty twenty-two.
That, that is our new millage, I believe.
What's the one that ran out in twenty-two?
No, that's the, it's, it's the older one that ran out in twenty-two, the one that was put in in two thousand and sixteen, maybe?
Are you?
Do you have that?
I actually pulled language from that millage and put it into this resolution. It was very clear that would allow collection of funds from two thousand and eighteen through twenty twenty-two, meaning no more after November's tax bill went out. So this millage has expired. No, no doubt in my mind, this millage has expired and this is the one that was targeted for the resolution of intent. Uh, we can study it in greater detail at the county meeting next week. This measure, this motion, resolution rather, is intended only to comply with the Election Act or to notify the clerk. Uh, I'm very confident that we are, through this resolution, pinpointing a millage that has now expired. No doubt in my mind, it has expired. And so it would be appropriate then to use that one as our platform.
Okay. What about the previous, the other millage?
The other one hasn't expired yet. So there's no need to do any renewal. Uh, now we can sure talk about it next week about
Okay.
we went through having two millages and the dynamics that go along with that. But that millage right now is still being collected and I think it's another year or two uh, collection.
I will research it a little more and get down to the bottom of it. Um, so I guess I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Commissioners.
That was the only one that I had.
Commissioners, questions, comments. Commissioner Wiltie?
I really liked the suggestion that Mr. Sorbroke brought up about starting a committee.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that at all.
I wonder, how do you feel about that?
Um, initially, we had a couple of commissioners that were going to come down monthly, but it just, it never really happened. That was four years ago.
Do you guys have meetings, Ray? Do you have?
The only meetings that I have are the, um, uh, LAC meetings, which is a local advisory council of, of people in the community that, 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 um, are put on this board. And really, I'm down to one meeting a year because of COVID. I don't want to come, couldn't. Um, they have, I have to have one meeting a year to approve my budget. That's, that's mandatory. So I was having two to three meetings a year at that point.
Good. Do you feel that would be helpful?
It sure would. It would, it would let the commissioners know what is going on down there. Versus getting a phone call that somebody's complaining and then, and then I, then I, then I hear from all the commissioners, but other than that, I don't hear anybody.
Commissioner Scott?
I, I don't know what would be imple- with it, you know, coffee or, you know, we don't even have a coffee machine down there, so.
Well, uh, on that, on that subject, it was Commissioner Newbecker and I, we were going, we were going to go down there. We, we were a couple, a few different times. Uh, we were going to try to make it after the airport meeting because we both went there, but then it seemed like either I had something going or, or Brad had to get back to work or something like that. So we just didn't get over there.
But it was unofficial anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, we brought it up at, at a commissioner meeting. It got in the minutes of, we were going to kind of do that, but it was, uh, uh, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind doing that again. Um, uh, that my schedule has changed since four years ago, anyway.
Um, And, and what it entails or what you would expect from me, we'll learn as we go.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. There's no doubt that, that transit is run very nicely, um, for a long time, I think. Uh, without doubt, you're not here, you're not, we don't call you to the carpet very often at all, you know? And, and as far as a complaint, I don't think I ever talked to you about a complaint I had. Matter of fact, I used the service here a few months ago and brought it up at a meeting because it was such a good service. And they were there at my house in twenty minutes. The bus was as clean, it was as brand new. It was great, you know? Uh, the subject to this millage though, um, I think we really need to talk to you about. I, I'd like to see the actual number of fund balance that we have. I haven't seen that on paper.
And, and like, and like I said last week, this fund balance, good majority of it has, has been given to us by the state and federal government over the last four years. And it's, it's not fair to look at that fund balance to say that, well, you know, you don't need a millage because we're not going to get that. Yeah, that's, that's just, that just happens.
Okay, well then, that's what we need to take a look at is, is it, is it sustainable or not? If, if there isn't going to be other state fundings, then that may, that would affect our fund balance.
For this year, we're back down to our eighteen percent of federal, um, change in years to come, but there's no way to help that.
But again, the cost of a special election versus if another election does come up this year for, for another reason or another entity or something like that. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't see, right, right now, I don't see the urgency of like a May election. I think we could wait, uh, for August even, and we'd still be able to apply the tax by, by August. I, I believe that we can, if we, if, if, if military request passed, it could be applied for the December tax bills. We've done that in the past.
I, I was.
I mean, the timing is there, I think.
Commissioner Simmons?
But if you want to talk more about this next week, it's committee as a whole, that's probably better.
Commissioner Simmons, do you have any questions on this resolution? Resolution six B.
Six B.
To place it on the ballot.
But to make up for the
lost millage.
Yeah, I think we have to, but I don't know what to pass because of, you know, because of the conditions of the economy right now. That's, that's the only problem. And are there going to be anything, other things on the ballot?
As of right now, no. So we're, we're going to vote on this on six B.
Let me vote now?
Not quite yet. We're close. Commissioner Mayhew, do you have any questions?
So if we don't get this, what about your fund balance?
Yeah. We, we've got some substantial fund balance, but there are things in the works that are coming up that are going to uh, use some of that fund balance, I, I hope. Uh, one is our cool storage for our buses. I had a grant for it, but that grant was uh, I applied for that over four years ago. The price of that old barn has skyrocketed compared to what it was.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
But we didn't have, this, this has been discussed with the commissioners. We don't have enough money to even build an adequate old barn. There's no sense to build one with the money we have because it's not even going to be adequate to, to, to park all the buses that we have outside. The buses that are sitting outside, it, it is a, um, it's a problem, especially in the winter. Somebody's got to go out there every day, clean those buses off, de-ice them, uh, if, if you need me, I mean, it's, it's not a good plan.
Yeah, I understand about, um, fund balances and some people have large ones and they look at all of this money, but then when you bring something like that up, that kind of changes the whole picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You, there is a post on our iPads and, and I appreciate that, but I don't quite under, I don't quite understand it. Where, where is the total fund balance currently? Is it, is it in this?
It's not scheduled till next meeting, the whole meeting. And you'll get a lot of detail about budget and finances and.
Okay.
Like seven hundred and fifty thousand or something.
Because there's
More than that.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Mayhew? Okay. Go ahead.
So, so Ray, I know you've really struggled with finding proper people to consistently drive our buses.
Definitely.
So would you say operational right now? Because this is a very important topic, to have this transfer for our county. Are you in a position with the people you have that we can continue consistently to provide the service that we have been?
Certainly. Yeah, and that is, you know, going to these out, outlying counties four times a day. We, we talked last week about Skidway Lake, but we didn't talk about Rose City and Lupton and South Branch. There, we go four times a day to them too. Um, you know, sometimes when we have people sick and we have another one call in, we don't have anybody to go. Bottom line, there's no one to do that route. Um, but that's, doesn't happen very often. So yes, we, we are, um, status quo at this point. And, um, the one driver I have that I did hire that just has a show for it, that was one of the agreements when I hired her, she would pursue the the total P endorsement. We would get her a bigger boss and uh, just a learning curve first of all, I guess. Um, Brett had emailed me a, um, Zoom meeting about nationwide um, transit facilities that, it's nationwide. All transit facilities are having trouble getting and retaining that person. That's, that's the story. What I gathered from it, it was quite extensive. What I gathered from it is you need to keep your people happier, but you need to more or less have more full-time. You need to offer them insurance and, and better pay to keep them. They can go to McDonald's at this point and make fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour and we're starting out at fifteen, so. And they have a big responsibility with the transit at McDonald's. They don't have much responsibility. So that, that's an issue. No doubt about it. And that's the nationwide, that's the consensus that I gathered from it.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Simmons?
You have, uh, do your full-time transit people have benefits now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to double check because you, you meant.
Like I said, we will be losing a couple of full-timers, I think, almost positive with that.
Okay.
We have, we have a motion to approve, uh, item six B, the intent to place a ballot question about transit funding before the electorate. Anybody like to make that motion?
I'd rather, I'd rather, uh, make a motion to, to, uh,
Would any?
Table this until the, uh, table this question until the, uh, next meeting.
Okay.
A second.
Is there any, hold on. Is there anybody that would like to make the initial motion?
Tim, I, I have a question before they, they vote.
You go through the chair to answer the question.
Um, I
Go ahead.
Um, I'm not familiar with the date, but this has to be submitted to the county line.
Twenty-fourth. That's wait till the next meeting.
Daniel, okay, so we have time to wait till next week?
We have committee of the whole. Nope, it'll be too late. We have committee of the whole.
You gotta decide it now or we can always pull it out if you don't want to do it.
Well, that's, this is for the May election. You still have two other election cycles in the, in the, in the year. You also have August, the outside of November. So this would be a deadline for the May election.
I don't know all that, so.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yes, yes, that is.
We all went into the May election, then we have.
We have time. We do. We do. So again, is there any, is there any, anybody that's, uh, resolution to intend to place a ballot question about the transit funding before the electorate? We do not have a, a motion for that. So now we have a motion on the table to table this from Commissioner Scott and we had support from Commissioner Simmons.
Second.
Any further discussion on that, that this resolution will be tabled?
Still, still, I want to, like, it's the next week's meeting, not
That's when
The following.
Nope, the next meeting is committee of the whole, the following meeting, then you will pull it from the table if that's what you choose to do.
Yes.
Roll call vote on it.
Roger Mayhew.
This is to table it.
Yes.
Charles Wilson.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seven, new business. We have claims. Item seven, new business. We have claims.
Thank you. I I did have one more comment. I I.
Mr. Blamer?
I do know that in two thousand twenty-four, our other millage will be.
Okay, so you're coming you're coming to the committee of the whole next week?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll see you then. Thank you for your time. We have claims for a total of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and three cents. I believe Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Simmons reviewed claims.
That's that's correct.
Commissioner Scott, you have the floor.
Oh, go ahead. I think Brenda's got more work than I do.
Do you have anything to say, Commissioner Scott, on claims?
Oh, let me look at it here. All right, I I did have a question for the sheriff or sheriff's office, uh, if I could.
Go ahead.
You guys bought some new bulletproof vests. I imagine the old ones uh dined out. They have a death date or whatever you call it. Uh?
Shell plate.
Shell plate, yeah. So what do we do with the old ones?
Have those uh secured in the facility. Sorry. We will keep those on hand in case we have any ride alongs.
If I run along, I have to wear obsolete.
We have that option for. People are on the road, just give you an extra level. It's expired. We make them wear that, but it still has some validity to it. So that I won't have to go without access.
You know, police agency, another police agency can use them or they're not legal to use on a regular basis.
Because of the expiration.
Yeah.
They're not they're not sellable to another agency.
So how long you think we're going to show them? Till the next till these ones here, will they show them? We'll throw them away?
Throw them away.
But that's what we'll do is we'll end up trash trash them?
Actually, yes.
Okay. Okay, that was the only question I had.
Nothing else on claims?
No, no.
Commissioner Simmons, go ahead.
I have a question. What kind of envelopes do you get from USPS? I noticed the price here and I go.
Who was?
Who was your question for, Commissioner Simmons?
Go to jail.
Did you?
I went through Office Central. They got four boxes had to put in baits. And mailings related to the deal. Those those came through Office Central.
So I noticed that five hundred envelopes was three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty cents. What kind of envelopes are they?
Heavy duty with the the address on it for the day of the return address.
Also, you have it pre-printed.
Correct.
Okay. I have one other question. Um. Yeah, there was a invoice in there from Relias. Uh, and I noticed that um Leah David's still on the invoice as a as on the mailing address. Is there a reason for that?
Uh, because it takes in some of these businesses of an act of God to get some of the names changed. I've done that over the last two years and there are still some accounts that maintain previous administration names on the account for.
Well, I I just wondered because it's been two years. I was just wondering.
Everything as far as emails and stuff transferred over to our our administration. There's a few companies that I've sent repeated emails and contacts with. Adding my name to the accounts with the sheriff's name. They still maintain retired members.
Those are the only two only two things I had questions about because I didn't know and I won't know next time. But I didn't have any questions about their invoices except for those.
Well, I have a couple of questions. What is the uh builders for the housing? There's a couple of housing ones in here, fourteen hundred, ninety-nine hundred, thirteen hundred. Is that for uh through Leanne?
Yes.
Okay.
What was?
Any any other questions on claims?
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-two oh seven.
My second.
Oh, I said one hundred and sixty-eight. So that's the amount approved. Amount approved is one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and seven cents. I apologize for that. We have a motion for Commissioner Scott approve. Uh.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Is there any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Uh, Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Item eight A unfinished business, resolution to appoint calendar year twenty twenty-three standing committee members. Did you guys receive those? Tim posted those. I received everybody's uh request.
I need to see one from you.
I looked it over. Um.
We revised copy here because the one I have is doesn't have anything from David or Wiltse.
No, Wiltse did um.
It's on my iPad.
Yep, Wiltse did uh email me or texting, excuse me, his requests. And I kind of filled in as far as uh other areas where uh individuals were not interested and what coincided with my schedule. Was there any questions or comments on the twenty twenty-three standing committee members?
Yes, I have a I have a question.
Yep.
This one, so I'm trying to find it. There you go.
This we're looking at this right here. Uh, uh, claims and accountants, insurance, law enforcement, negotiating ordinance enforcement and personnel and policy.
So these are the standing committees.
Correct. Did any?
That looks good to me.
Did you have any questions on these?
I do not.
Not yet.
Commissioner Scott, did you have any questions on those?
I'm trying to find them. Listen, I just got the iPad this morning. Oh, the new guy's got me.
Did you have an opportunity to look at these, Commissioner Wiltse?
Ah, yes, I did.
Did you have any questions on them?
Uh, no, I would like to bring up quick. I really liked this idea about a committee for the transport. That's something we can discuss now or?
Would that be on the standing committee members or the member liaisons?
Yes. Well, in this case, because it's a agency of the county, it would really belong as a standing committee, much like your law enforcement committee.
Okay.
Put it on that level.
So we how about we add that? Probably two commissioners. You guys agree with that?
I'd like to be on that.
Commissioner Wiltse, is there another commissioner that would like to be on that?
Which one?
The uh transit.
Me. I used to ride those buses.
So we have Commissioner Wiltse and Commissioner Simmons.
Yep.
For the transit, we added one.
What is that, the standing?
Yep, under the standing committees twenty twenty-three. Can you can you see it now, Commissioner Scott?
Well, I got. The list of member liaisons. Are we on the wrong?
So we're on the standing committees. There's two separate lists.
All right, all right, I'm here now.
You are on negotiations and law enforcement. And the first quarter claims and accountants.
That's all I'm off of personnel and policy.
Correct.
All right.
Questions?
Um, notice under ordinance enforcement, there's only you.
Yeah, is there supposed to be two on there? It didn't say.
Two on each committee. Uh, but we don't have many ordinances that.
Yeah.
To enforce either, so you could get away with one if you want it, but it would be in an abnormal.
Would you like to serve on that as well? So do we need to pass a resolution for this, Tim?
You need a motion to pass.
Did you see this up here? This is for claims and accountants. So you're on the second quarter, April, May, June.
How do I get back to the other one?
You know, personnel policy, that's. Those are midday. Those are midday meeting dates. You you got that time for that?
So those are as needed. So, yeah, I can make that work. Yeah, it's something I don't I knew very I I I wanted to do that. I got up uh not doing the security. I know very little about that, so. It was something that that definitely sparked my interest. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Agree.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion. We have a motion to uh approve the appoint calendar year twenty twenty-three standing committee members.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Commissioner Simmons. Do we have a su- support from Commissioner Wiltse? Any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Items eight B, resolution to appoint calendar year twenty twenty-three liaisons to various boards and commish commissions.
Yeah, they'll get back.
I did reach out to Tim on this. I was wondering if there's some boards that that maybe with with us having Zoom and having these meetings posted. You know, if if commissioners were not necessarily interested in that, if it still was needed, um, the Fair Board was one. What else did we talk about, Tim? Did we talk about any other ones?
That was our example. There's another one you have on here, the Community Corrections Advisory Board. That is right now sort of in mothballs, so it's not even meeting. Uh, because there was no state funding for it.
And remonumentation, I don't what?
Uh, remonumentation frankly is handled by the equalization. It doesn't need an oversight committee. It's just a a grant. Project that the state's already dictated what section corners are surveyed and and the whole process. So that doesn't really need to be designed.
And then addresses, unknown unknown meeting schedule.
Yeah, the address committee hasn't meant that was originally set up, oh, probably twenty years ago as uh. Nine one one went into effect, we had to create uh. It is called the P staff list. I don't ask what the acronym stands for, but we had to create addresses throughout the county that were official. Occasionally, an address would get assigned and a homeowner or business owner would say, that's not the address I want. We had to have an appeals process. This is where your oversight board came into came into play. We are beyond that. Now it's a routine matter through, I believe, uh, zoning, actually, maybe it's equalization. Signs the address, but these are for new structures now, so there isn't generally a conflict with it. So as far as any oversight is concerned, it probably is not necessary.
Again, I I got everybody's request. I I tried to to appease everybody. Um. Any questions on this? Did you see this list, Mr. Mayhew?
Hi.
Is this is this for the liaison liaison?
Correct.
And you only have one commissioner for each one?
Uh, yeah, there was only a few that that uh in the parentheses that said needed to, and I see I did not put District Health Department number two. You requested that, Commissioner Mayhew. I I think you voiced concern or uh request on that to Commissioner Simmons, correct or no?
Usually they have two on there.
It does say two members.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't mind being on there. You know, I was chair of the board at one time. And um, yeah, I'd even if they didn't, if I couldn't do one for transit, I'd be in transit too.
Commissioner Scott, did you have an opportunity to look at this?
Yes, yes, I did.
Did you have any questions?
No, we. Uh. Commissioner Vaughn was on Parks and Rec with me in the past. We do have a vacancy there. Somebody wanted to be on that. Otherwise, we may choose, the committee may choose to find the public to do it.
So is there any other commissioners that wanted to serve on Parks and Rec? With Commissioner Scott? Or would you? Parks and Rec? Does that interest you? It's okay.
Chair.
Yes.
There is actually a statutory structure for the Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Scott is currently listed as the planning commission designee. Uh, member. Planning commission has to have a representative on there. Uh, Commissioner Vaughn was the county commissioner representative, so so we have understanding how that dynamic works. Both positions have to be filled by statute. One from the planning commission, one from the county board. We just happen to have a commissioner who was on the county.
Okay.
Here, Scott Bell. Scott Bell is on the planning commission. It sits on the parks board too. What position does he fill?
He is filling uh in one of the at-large positions right now, but he could be assigned to that. But then we'll have to look at the uh term of the seat because it's.
Okay.
Saying the planning commission is could be an annual appointment out of the planning commission for that man.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was a lot of interest in the planning and that's again something that I knew nothing about. I reached out to uh Mr. Vitter and asked him when they when they meet and. And um it definitely coincided with my schedule, so. Can we more to come on, Commissioner Simmons?
I have a comment. Uh, on the Parks and Rec, I pulled up the. Um, the people who belong to that board and so has my name on it. I don't know how that happened.
Over time, some companies don't change the names.
Thank you, guys.
Well, that's what happens.
So there can be more. Can you can you touch base with Mr. Bell, uh, Tim?
I can.
Okay.
Um, you know, also point out that uh. Resolution twenty-one sixty-three appointed Commissioner Simmons to the Parks and Rec. That's a relative new one. Uh, so well, right now, you're paying him on it now.
No, I'm not on it.
Kind of are. Well, you know, under Sheriff mentioned act of God, we can modify that by saying act of God or motion of the board. Where victim of a motion of the board, so.
That wasn't even here. I wasn't even a member.
What happens when you're not here, you get volunteered.
There will be more. I can't be.
There'll be more to come on that. Could you put that on committee of the whole?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other discussion on this?
Uh, I'd just like to uh strongly encourage that we keep uh Mark Sherbrook on the Savo.
Yeah. Agreed. So on that right now, it looks like currently Gary Clacking until March of twenty twenty-four, Al Evans until March of twenty twenty-two and Mark Sherbrook until twelve of twenty twenty-two. So if we're going to extend that, is there any other commissioners that would like to serve on a Savo Valley Committee Meta Health? Is there any commissioners that would like?
That I.
So how about we move forward with the Commissioner Sherbrook? Um, do we need to pass a resolution on that?
We'll I'll take the uh current and then the expiration date off from that and then you'll be an appointment by you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Simmons.
Like in the planning commission stuff, they bring names to us and we just approve them. Is it isn't the same way with this with this uh to put them on the board is?
So we.
To have them do it. I mean, because he's not a commissioner.
We pass resolutions now with with terms and expirations and of a very formal.
That's what I'm saying. Oh, usually. The mental health board would say, we'd like to have Mark Sherbrook on and we just approve it. But I could be totally wrong.
No, they have they do bring them to us typically, um, and then a resolution is formed as far as a a timeframe and a and a sunset on those. And if they would like them renewed, that's brought back to us, or if there's other individuals that are interested.
So why wouldn't it be that way in this particular case? Why would the mental health board bring up Mark Sherbrooke and we just approve it?
Um, isn't that how this initiated? The Savo Valley came to us and and requested a commissioner, correct?
And I did get an email back when Kale was working here earlier in the week from Al Savo saying. Uh, like Mark's confirmation and I informed them that that would happen at this meeting. So your action will answer their request to have him appointed.
Oh, that I just want to make sure that they request them, but I would hate to put somebody on the board that they didn't want.
That's fair.
But I think they want Mark.
That's fair. So you'll have a resolution at the next meeting?
Or.
To approve Mr. Sherbrooke?
You can do that now with this resolution. It's in front of you, appointing your liaison. I don't know off the top of my head what the terms are, but I will find that out. I think it's a year term. So we'll just have to fix that date. But in this case, I think this was a seat that uh that Mark was actually filling a vacancy.
He was.
Created, so I'm not positive what that expiration date is. I will find it and I will put it on the resolution when it's finalized, where you see you'll have it. I I also wanted to just point out on the agriculture.
Yep.
Uh, we have Commissioner Wiltse. I did put a slash next to that one saying also the MSU Advisory Council, so what's to serve a dual purpose? That way you're not creating a separate one for agriculture when MSU is really. Based founded on agricultural service.
Perfect. Any other questions? Comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Simmons.
Uh, just a minute here. I have to find it. I'm really having a hard time with this thing. I'm telling you, I'm pushing buttons that shouldn't be pushed and.
It gets easier.
Just a minute. Uh, just a minute. I got I'll find it.
Is it about a board?
Yes.
That you were on?
Yeah, NMCA. And it meets the third Monday at nine forty five. Where is that meeting held?
I don't recall anybody serving on that or any updates on that. The M and the Northern Michigan Counties Association.
I will communicate directly with Commissioner Simmons. They did just set their meeting schedule for this year. And they do a lot of meetings by Zoom and live, so you can travel across town for those meetings. So they are not the regular monthly meetings. They do skip months. On occasion too, but I will get you that information. Get you set up.
Would you like to?
It's the third Monday of the month.
Generally, that's true. At nine forty five, but they did, for instance, move their. Combined their November and December meetings, and that was on like the first Monday of December, so that you jump around on a couple of those. But I did, you have the dates now for twenty twenty three and I will.
The third, the third Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. It's tough for me.
So would you like to be taken off?
I'm taking care of fifty cats on those.
Would you like to be taken off those that that one?
If if I could be home, you know, by one or two o'clock, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't recall any any commissioners reporting on that.
Well, Commissioner Newbaker had the assignment for the last two years. I participate in the Zoom session by tuning into those.
Okay.
So I'm getting the information and generally it's. We mainly have what Mac already gives us as far as legislative about things are concerned. And I'm. Absolutely willing to continue to do that. It's. Get familiar too with who's who in the other counties. So that's pretty much how it happened. Brad did zoom in on a couple of those meetings.
You have the ability to to participate by Zoom?
Yes.
And I've also applied for in. This week's the last week you can apply for it, but I already have my application in for the. For the MAC at the state level. In Lansing. So and then and they meet on the first Monday of the month. So that wouldn't interfere with any of my meetings. At the state.
Mr. Sherbrook or Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Sherbrook, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to point out that Al Evans's term has expired on Sabo Valley as of March twenty two. So his term has expired, so I assume you're going to need to reappoint Al Evans to Sabo Valley as well.
Oh, March, I said March twenty twenty two. Yeah.
I got a question for Mark if I could. Does Gary Clacking still attend?
Yes.
So all three of you guys are attending.
There are four members from Ogumah County on, so.
Oh, who's a four?
Rose Walsh.
Oh.
Oh.
Rose has been on since Rose was on the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rose has been on for like sixteen years of.
She was still in NMSK too. The last, the last I participated in NMSK.
Okay. Well. Right now on our list is three, it says, but. And it's saying that Mark's an alternate on this list. But if we do have four slots, then.
Not a commissioner.
You know. If the county has four slots, then we should address that in that manner. As rather than two members of an alternate.
I'm just gonna look more into this.
Because they got a feeling that there's there's many counties who participate in this and and they may be appointed. From another agency or something.
I the makeup of the board. Three counties make up of the board. And Ogumah County has six men. Ogumah County has four. Skoggi County has two. Thirty seven population. That board was. Nearly set up, but all those members are appointed by the boards of commissioners to serve on that board. Ogumah County has four, I ask for six. I ask for two.
Perfect. Tim will bring us more information on that. Can I have a resolution to appoint calendar year twenty twenty three liaisons to various boards and commissions? Do I have a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion.
Motion for Commissioner Simmons? I'll support it. Discussion, Commissioner Scott?
Oh, I have one more question.
Hold on, Commissioner Scott.
Where's the transit fit in?
We already did the transit. The transit was on the standing committee members. Now we're on liaisons.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Simmons?
Have you designated a second person be on Board of Health?
Pardon me?
Did we designate a second person be on Board of Health? This department, number two.
Where are we looking?
Standing. Now he is on.
Uh, it doesn't say two members in it, Department of, oh, I'm on Department of Health Services, Dr. Chilton. Yes. You, 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 we, I wrote you in.
Okay.
I have Mr. Mayhew or Commissioner Mayhew and Commissioner Simmons.
Did you write me on anything else?
No.
Who's transit?
That was just discussed under standing committee members. That was just passed.
And this is last.
That was me too. Okay, that's good.
Any further discussion?
Oh, my God. Got it.
Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David. Roger Mayhew. Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Item nine administrations report.
For you, number one, to remind you that the. Meeting that will be held February ninth. That's a nine o'clock meeting. That's where we will repeat its day. We started that last year. So you will have shadow for every commissioner here at the DIAs. So that will also continue on throughout the morning where a number of our departments are also participating. And it's will be shadowing each of those department heads, learn a little bit more about the county government, how it functioned, and it was very successful last year. Really looking forward to it again this year. Next item I want to report on is actually deals with the department head meeting that we had on Monday, but is good update for the board as well. The first concerning our driver authorization policy, you may recall, well, two commissioners will recall. A new policy that was approved last year at the request of our insurance carrier, and that is that we. Keep a record of driving records for anybody who's driving for the county. There are thresholds, a number of accidents or traffic citations that would disqualify somebody driving for the county. We do have thirty four employees who have already gone through that authentication process, but no surprises. Um, did remind department heads about the requirement to do this and that. Anybody turning in a travel expense voucher will be expected to have one of these forms on file as well. So we'll make sure that the commission has access to those as soon as our email is back up and functioning. I'll send you the links and you'll have access to everything that you'll need. For that authentication process as well. Sometime the week of January twenty fourth, our new X-ray machine is supposed to be shipped, and that's the machine that we have at the entrance at the security station. I did advise department heads as the prior board has suggested is that once that machine is here, everyone will use it daily. So that would include employees coming through will be subject to. Going through that X-ray machine as well. I do anticipate some bottlenecks early on, but once we get the things worked out, I don't think this is going to be an issue for us. It may cause a couple of minute delay, you know, getting through it to the line, but I don't believe it will be a major issue. So we do intend to follow through with the meeting with the board when that purchase was made. Brought up earlier for the committee of the whole meeting was the time clock. We did talk about the time clock policy at the department head meeting as well. They have it. I've not had any feedback. It's pretty self explanatory at this stage, so I won't anticipate a whole lot. So that has been in their hands as well, the department heads. Did also advise our department heads that the travel per mile. Travel reimbursement rate was increased by the IRS as of January one, bumped up to sixty five and a half cents per mile. So that's up three cents from what it was. This is the third increase in a year. I don't frankly anticipate another one this year unless we see another spike up to the five dollar range. I don't think we'll see another spike in that. There is a question that was posed among county administrators. About a statutory requirement for commissioners and their reimbursement, and there's a reference to a state body that sets the travel reimbursement rate for elected officials. Meaning county boards in this case, not our countywide electates, but county boards, the legislative bodies. I'm not sure the interpretation was correct. One of my colleagues believed that language said, well, that forty four cent per mile rate is what commissioners would reimburse. Don't think that's accurate, but I'm gonna ask our legal counsel to look into that just to make sure. So if there is some deviation to that for commissioners, I'll let you know. I will be surprised. Wildly, I guess, sometimes things crop up and and so we hopefully set things straight. Department heads are also provided, but there are twenty twenty three. Meeting schedules, so they've got your schedule. They have a schedule of our department head meetings as well, which will continue to be the second Monday at nine o'clock. And then finally, I did also remind departments that at the next meeting, I do intend to have me the whole, the draft of the quarterly budget adjustments for the first quarter. We have had some activities. You had a grant that you approved today through the sheriff's office, for instance, that will be on there. We do have some other dynamics in play, but I gotta tell you, I'm actually pretty impressed. Talking department heads, even after that meeting, how closely they're paying attention to this now. Remember a year ago, we did this, we really. Didn't have a whole lot of activity or conversation even with departments. And I've got departments out that are really getting into the weeds, anticipating some other expenses. That are coming up and others that will not come up. So you'll see some of those adjustments even in the first quarter. This isn't the quarter where I expect to see a lot of adjusting. So this is a very good, I think, deep dive by some of our departments. I would expect that when we get to the second quarter, you'll see a few more, and obviously the third quarter, you'll see a few more as clarity. As far as expenses and revenues becomes more focused, but you'll see some activity. I'm pretty pleased with the progress that we've made there. I think our departments are tuned in where they need. So that's that's my report.
Any questions for Tim?
I have one.
Commissioner Simmons?
The commissioners that went to that. During community council, commissioners conference.
We can become Brenna.
Question was that we're, three of our commissioners went to the MSU training for new commissioners. The question was whether they get reimbursed for mileage for that. The answer is yes. I just need to confirm your rate. So.
Oh, okay, because of that comment. Okay, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions for Tim? Commissioner Scott? Item ten, elected official and department head reports. Clerk?
Brett Gildner, Ogumah County Clerk. Just to inform you guys, we are. Down the one employee now, so all of the. Clerks in there are bumped up to work the extra hours. That is expected to go through the next six to eight weeks. And Tracy's been working on W twos. Those are done and going to be going out today. Other than that. We're going to be busy in there being down the person, so. Just keep that in mind. When coming into our office. That's it.
Treasurer?
Good morning, Karen Boguski, Ogumah County Treasurer. My update is in regards to the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund. If you remember, for the ones that you that work here. They were offering a program of grant funding to assist property owners with back taxes due to COVID. And to date, we have received thirty thousand six hundred ninety two dollars and eighty two cents in funding through that anyhow program by promoting it with our taxpayers. So they will continue to fund until the resource is gone, so we continue to. Keep those flyers out to our delinquent taxpayers. And if you're at a meeting and hear any word of anyone in need, please. Pass along my contact information so that I can help them. You may have noticed in the newspaper that the land bank completed our second project in December. Property on East Fourth Street in Prescott has been demolished and cleaned up successfully. And our. Land Bank Authority Board created a subcommittee. To apply for a grant. The state of Michigan has light funding available. We are set to apply for that grant January by January thirty first in hopes of getting two hundred thousand dollars to fund our land bank. So pretty exciting and hoping to continue the process over the next few years.
Any that property in Mills Township, the initial property, is that is that been sold?
It has not. It is up for sale for three thousand dollars. We have it posted on the State Land Bank Facebook page. We have it posted on our county Facebook, county website, and I have flyers in the hallway. So if you know, if anyone interested. Close to the beach, recreational area. Nice property.
So like real estate.
Trying.
Can I ask her?
Please.
Let me know about the credit cards.
Yes, yeah, so I was gonna mention that, yes. And one of the previous meetings last year, Mr. Scott had had asked if our credit card. Currently had any type of rewards program, and if not, could we move to a credit card that had rewards? Well. Surprise, surprise, we do have rewards and I was able to in January this month with our. With our monthly credit card payment, cash in on those rewards. So anyone that had, it was on a structured. You had to have so many points to get twenty five dollars, so many points for fifty, a hundred, two fifty, five hundred and a thousand. So anybody that had rewards built up on their credit card, I cashed them out to have checks issued back to us as revenue to the county.
Thank you.
One thou, I think it was one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars we have coming back in rewards.
Great, nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sheriff?
Morning.
Good morning.
Ogumah County Sheriff. I apologize. That was hot off the press this morning, our statistic for November, December. Uh, November, we had. Eighty four complaints. And in December, four hundred fifty six. So that just, that just shows the value of. The workload that we have.
Christmas. Get more complaints around Christmas.
A lot of, lot of family stuff.
Didn't get enough presents? Didn't, they didn't get enough presents?
Apparently not. Somia, apparently not. Usually it's over children. Anyway, if you want to look at that, and then also I provided, it was last week, statistics on the jail December. See, we had house and so on, so that's in there. And also I had a. Attached to that was our animal control, the. Year of two thousand twenty two, this statistics on there. And Tuesday, I presented a life saving award to one of our correction officers, Matt James. Individual, one of our, one of our inmates was attempting to commit suicide and. He stopped that from happening, so. Hats off to him. He got an award for that. You'll see that in the paper. So. Doing a very, very good job of that, of course.
I suggested if sometime you'd like to give on the work, we got. Nice backdrop with the wall of honor there. Add a commissioner meeting and usually always the papers, at least listing.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I have a question.
Here.
Sir.
On animal control?
Yeah.
If. If I have a dog and it bites somebody on my property. Does animal control have any input to them?
Well, what we do is. Secure the dog and then we got to check it and make sure it's got its shots.
There was a report that, and I could be totally wrong. That a dog bit somebody like a waste management guy or something, and they went and said, well, it's on his property. So nothing we can do.
I've been dealing with that for quite some time and.
So what are the issues with that? I don't understand.
Well, what I understand it was an aggressive dog.
Yes.
And was running at large several times and Scott was on vacation.
Yes.
Came back. That's been addressed.
So, well, I don't know what has been because I got a complaint yesterday on it again.
On the same complaint?
Same complaint.
Okay. Well, I'll check into it.
All right. So you know, they have neighbors there that have little kids, so they're out there and their dog bites them.
I've talked to her myself a couple of times, actually called her back. So as far as I'm concerned, I was aware of that it was taken care of, but if you've got another call on that, I'll dig into it.
Did animal control get their vehicle yet?
Yeah.
Do we have?
That's been on order since March.
Yeah.
Still gonna be with me the whole topic.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, I read his mind. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Randy, do you have anything? Any updates? Oops, I'm sorry. Did you have something?
No, I just said, thank you, Sheriff.
Randy Booth, the Equalization Director, and just we did our appraisal studies, some of them in the state of Michigan, they're accepted, and so we're. Guess ready to start the new year and that whole process will start again. Pretty short, like. And if there's any questions for the commissioners.
Questions, commissioners?
I'm probably gonna go up.
Yes, property taxes are going to go up. Residential state. Yes, property taxes are going to go up, uh, residential sales. This year, uh, residential property and accounting probably is going up fifteen to twenty percent, depending on the top chip, so.
The price at that point was high too.
And the, yeah, prices are high, the, uh, the inflation rate this year was, uh, seven point nine percent. So it's the first year that there'll be a five percent increase in, uh, cap value and the taxable value on assessments. So the, uh, you're probably looking at, and we don't have the assessment rolls in. But, uh, you're probably looking at about a seven to eight percent increase in property tax revenues this year over last year.
Okay.
Uh, we'll know more in March after the board review, but they're. Their sizable increases, the first year I was here, it was one percent, so that's, that's a big difference.
Karen, I might be getting that one of those grants. In my property taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other? Any other elected officials or department heads on the phone? Jeff?
Yeah, I'm here, um, just Jeff Nichols, Veterans Bears, um, trying to get the video up, but that's not gonna work. Anyways, uh, just, uh. Brought up, looking at Randy's stuff, uh, I, I see our millages, this is our last year for our millage. So we're gonna have to do a probably a millage either next year or, or if there, if we do one this year, we can always do it a, a year early. But our millage ends this year, um, move is still in the process, we're hoping now April, not April, February. Um, to move over to the state police building, we're still waiting for, uh, the copier machine and stuff to come in. So we don't have to keep running back and forth and it just doesn't work with, uh, the amount of work that we have coming in here and the copying that we have to do. So just hopefully, uh, February, and that's all I got.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other elected officials or department heads on the phone? Item eleven, matters from the floor, I don't believe there are any, current commissioners. Item twelve, motions for adoption. Item thirteen, committee reports, uh, Commissioner Wilti, do you have any? Your township, your townships or your boards or your, uh?
Uh, this past Tuesday, I was the first township meeting I was at as commissioner. Um, right now, uh, a big issue over there in Mills Township and been for a long time is the roads. Got some, uh. Um, some residents that have been, uh, really voicing their opinion, mainly on social media about some of the roads. Obviously, right now with these conditions, weather is pretty rare, usually things are pretty locked down. Frost is in and out of the ground, so it's making a lot of our gravel roads a lot worse, um. I actually went over in the road commission and talked to Pat a little bit. That's gonna be an emphasis that township's gonna really work on. Other than that, they're, uh, working on a possible new township building, which is much needed. And, uh, new park. And other than that, it's just kind of businesses, normal would be there.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I attended the city west branch meeting and, uh, got there a little bit late, they hustled right through their meeting pretty quick, so. I missed, uh, quite a bit of it there, but really just, uh, minutes and stuff. They did have their AMR review from the tax commission, it came out a hundred percent, uh. They did make some reappointments to their DDA, it was rather quick meeting. Uh, tenant lost their township this, uh, this week, uh. Uh, business as usual up there, they, they, uh. Township's gonna put in a dock on Orshu Lake. Uh, at their expense, uh, just a rollout dock in there. Uh, the fire department had some issues, they're looking to bid on a fire truck up there. Um. Uh. And blight, blight's the number one, probably the number one issue up there, that's brought up at every meeting. I gotta say, you know, foster in, my, during my term, has been the most. Uh, attended meeting of all the townships that I, that I have gone to. Uh, and still, because the city is very well attended by public. Uh, uh, so they, they get, they have normally a, a dozen people up there in them.
The city is or is not?
Is not by the public, I mean, their department heads are there and, uh, the Herald's there. And, uh, uh, but, uh, Foster's a very well attended for, for communities, so. Away from things, you know, and usually it was, and, and a lot more attended in the summer, they have a lot of their seasonal piece. And their meetings. Um, other than that, uh, planning, well, I won't be going to planning this month, you will. So that's the end of the month, uh, we didn't have one last month. Um, airports next week, already reported on that at the last regular meeting. So, um, uh, parks and rec, uh, we, uh, met yes, yesterday. Uh, we're going to have our, we're gonna have our, uh, park managers in next month, take a look at twenty twenty-three. And what they may have on a wish list and things like that. Uh, we have the ten seasonals for the RV park already lined up. Uh, and, uh, they put their deposits on. And we have fourteen hundred dollars already come in for. Uh. Uh, for, uh, reservations. For next year, you know, that's, that's pretty good for January, because we have the Rover Pass computer-based system. You can just go on that and then reserve, pay, everything done on that, it works out really good. The fence got fixed up to Deer Park, so the deer have, are not running loose, so.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, I have some comments to make.
Talking out of turn. It's your turn, it is now your turn, yes.
I want the Horton Edwards and West Branch Township meetings, uh, this week, yeah. And, uh, there's some issues with, um, getting building permits to assessors and giving. And West Branch Township does their own zoning and stuff, and there's a building permit should go to them and they haven't, they're not getting them. And another thing on demolition permits, um, the health department should be getting those also. Because on demolition permit, if they have a water well or a subject tank, there's a proper way to take care of that by state of Michigan. Subject tanks had to be pumped out by accredited pumping person who pumps stuff out. And, uh, the well has to be, um, plugged, uh, in accordance with, uh, state of Michigan. And usually a licensed water well builder has to do that. And sometimes it doesn't happen, they just tip it over and that's the end of it, and now we've got a problem. So demolition permission needs to go to the health department. And the building permission needs to go to Horton Township and also West Branch Township. That's all I have.
Commissioner Mayhew, did you attend any township meeting?
I went to Cummins Township and they are having to redo their sewer line and they don't have a sewer. Rose City has the sewer, but Cummins has a sewer line, and they gotta redo that stretch down thirty-three. To the city, yeah, yeah, it's wild. And I went to West Branch Township. And the people are having trouble with Peach Lake. Algae, and they're having a little spat about that, so that's all I can tell you about them two places.
I attended Hill Township, Churchill Township and Logan Township. Um, Hill Township, that was the first time I was up to that, uh, hall, it's a beautiful hall, um. Really nice board, so I'm just getting my feet wet there, uh, first time I met those individuals, first time I, I actually was there. Talked a little bit about a fire truck, um, it was kind of a low-key meeting. It sounds like they get a little bit more exciting during the, uh, summer months when all those lakes, um, around there. So again, I'm just getting my feet wet and, and learning, uh, how they do things up there. So Churchill, um, I also attended that meeting, that was my first time at that meeting as well. Um, they talked a little bit about ARPA funds, they talked about, uh, some fire hydrants, I think there's two fire hydrants in that township. Um, some snow removal around them and they talked about a parcel, um, and they voted on a parcel in that township as well. Um, that meeting was pretty quick as well, uh, Logan Township, um, that's a different story, right Ogama Herald? Um, I did, I did, that is. This is a new story, um, you know, I, 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 it started at seven. And I think I left about quarter to nine and I think it went till ten thirty, if I'm not mistaken.
I am here, I got home a quarter to ten.
Okay, I, I talked to Shirley and she, I, I'm not exactly sure, but anyways, um, uh, uh, they have a new board member there. Um, a lot of controversy continues, um, with that board. Uh, as far as appointing, I, I think the main topics was appointing somebody to the fire board, um. I don't even know, some roads were discussed, but that's going quite well, actually, um, the millage went through, so they have some funding. They're having, uh, a conversation with the road commission and, and they're making a plan, uh, that they're gonna invest in some roads over there. Um. ARPA funds were discussed a little bit, uh, the hall renovations, they're doing some updates to the bathroom. Um, I, I'm not really sure if anything was actually decided at that meeting or not, um, I don't believe so. But there'll be more to come on that, I, I, I'm sure, um. Unfortunately, it's a board that's really struggling, uh, really struggling, so there'll be more to come on that. Um, I think that's all, uh, Churchill and my other township Richland meet at the same time. Uh, same day, so I'm gonna have to rotate between, uh, those two, first Monday at, uh, seven o'clock. And they're about thirty minutes apart, so. Um, so I'm gonna have to rotate, uh, between those two, so. Anything else, any, go ahead, Commissioner Wilti?
Couple items I, I should have added, uh, blight is also a really big issue in Mills Township. Uh, we have a light officer who's really committed, spends a lot of time and we are making some pretty good improvements there. Uh, some people that were there, uh, did, did tell them that they like to see, well, see that progress has been moving forward and things are getting better. I'm a big supporter of the land bank, that's also helped with a couple of houses taking down, a big supporter of the land bank. Um, and then also there was a number of residents that wanted to make sure that Sheriff Gilbert was recognized for the amount of. Good things that are happening in the township when it comes to the presence of the county officers, a lot of good things happening. I don't know, that's very important, so I was very happy to hear that, I should have stated that right away. And then also coming spring, our, uh, volunteer fire department, which is very strong, solid, fire department in those township. Will be getting repaid, ask.
General public comment, item fourteen, same rules apply, but this is to any subject matter, is there any public comment in the room? Come on up. You got three minutes?
My name is Lily Snyder with the Michigan Institute of forensic science and medicine. Um, I just wanted to present some current numbers and numbers from the year past are reflecting some positive changes that have been made so that we can better serve Ogama County. Uh, this previous year, we replaced the toxicology lab that we were using, um, and went with a different company. This is allowing us to get those toxicology reports back, um, and, and tremendous improvements. Um, which has been in turn getting the autopsies to families into law enforcement as well as getting the, um, death certificates. At a, um, much more time-sensitive manner. So back in two thousand twenty, April through December, if you look at, we had, uh, fifty-nine total cases of those fifty-nine cases, thirteen were autopsy cases. At that time, we had a four to six week turnaround for toxicology reports. Then moving on to two thousand twenty-one, we had a total of a hundred and eight cases, um, hundred of those being ME cases with thirty-five being autopsy cases. And again, in two thousand twenty-one, we were looking at a four to six week turnaround time for those toxicology reports. So that brings us to two thousand twenty-two, where we had a hundred and nineteen cases, hundred and nine of those being ME cases, with forty-seven being autopsy cases. In two thousand and twenty-two, we're now averaging four, I'm, I'm sorry, ten to fourteen days to get a toxicology report back. Which is a significant improvement from previous years, where we were looking at four to six weeks. Um, and then just if I can make one more note, um, we're actively in, in the process of, um, having our own toxicology lab. Would be the only lab in the forensic toxicology in the state of Michigan. And that would definitely, uh, decrease the amount of time even more in getting those reports back as opposed to sending them out of state. We would be doing them at our own facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Snyder, S N Y D E R.
Commissioner Scott?
Um, the first two years you quartered, twenty-one, twenty and twenty-one, that was pretty much, uh, autopsies were like three to one.
Correct, it looks like two thousand twenty that, um, we provided services for April through December, so it wasn't a. And in two thousand and twenty, which was fifty-nine total cases of that time. Uh, we've increased between two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two by about ten cases. And, and currently, two thousand twenty-three, we're at six cases with one being an autopsy since the beginning of the year.
Six cases so far and one being an autopsy.
I think, don't you have that on committee of the whole coming up? Our, we were, that contract's expiring soon, correct? Okay.
Oh.
So we'll have.
Good thing you showed up, yeah, the contracts.
Thank you, any other public comment?
Can we ask, can I ask the sheriff anything about? Related to this?
Is it, I mean, is it?
ME, and, well, I mean, that's why we went with these people, because it originated out of them.
Right, but is it something that, that when we're talking about the contractor, is it something?
Well, about the service, just wanna ask the sheriff.
Go ahead.
Sheriff, is our service with the ME?
I, I haven't heard any complaints, so I, I think you're doing a good job.
Okay, great, great.
Thank you.
Cause that was a topic with law enforcement, right, back a couple of years.
We, we're okay with it.
Good, good, thank you.
Any other public comment in, in the room? Did you have something back there?
Uh, nothing at all, I'm just here to observe.
Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item fifteen adjournment, we have, uh, ten twenty-seven, can I have a motion to? Adjourn?
A motion.
Have a motion, Commissioner Wilti? We have support?
Yep.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew, uh, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries, ten twenty-seven, we adjourn.
There you go, we got it.